...
Rain. I used to have a dish and whenever it was raining or heavy snow, I would have Crizy Internet and Crizy TV.
That's just part of it.
Yeah, that shouldn't be my enjoyment in the house.
No, it's not ideal. I just want to make sure my name's on camera. Hi, Nora.
They improved the line of sight.
I don't think they need to.
Also put more exposes than what I get.
So this is what the start of a meeting looks like.
Those things were going on, they just weren't ready to be talked about.
Hello, Richard.
Thank you.
We may need to play this.
Thank you.
Name it. Want to be my mom when she sits down? She does, she's fine.
Sitting down these days.
Yeah, getting up is worse.
You call gravity helping you.
Yeah. Make sure the seat's in the right place.
It's complicated too.
Okay, let's call the work session to order. Mind everyone we're being videoed and audiod? Start off with our reports from the statewide adoption network conference.
I'm going to come there for just...
Wherever you want to go.
I'm Clarissa. I attended the statewide adoption network conference in January. This is a conference through SWON and Independent Living Program, which is a program that I run. And they have these four times a year. And every winter they have it in State College at the Penn State, or so that's when we attended. And it's like one and a half days. So the first thing we did, they had a keynote presenter, and it was Evan Thornburg. And she works at the governor's office in Philadelphia. And she runs like their LGBTQ programs there. So she talked about the history of LGBTQ, how we can provide better services for our kids that fit that criteria, resources, and issues and barriers that have existed and continue to exist for that population. The next session I chose was legal issues for older youth, and that one talked about permanence for our kids. Hi. Oh, I'm sorry. Transition planning, securing adult connections, independent living, which is the program that I knew, education and related services, age-appropriate excursions, and resumption of jurisdiction. They also talked about the laws that take place for our older kids in care, and how do we manage older youth and provide them with the opportunities that they are eligible for. And then the last training that I did was adolescent suicide. And that talked about concerns for parents, caregivers, and professionals, like what to look out for, signs. They, it was really informative. They talked a lot about like making a profile for youth who are like more likely to like commit suicide or have like these suicidal ideations, and like how self-destructive property fits in, like all of that, and how to intervene. Can I ask a question?
Yeah. So the kids that are in your independent living group and so on, do they have access to counseling if you should like a...
We could always set up, a lot of them are already in counseling through Crossroads or another program, but we could always set it up for something, not with us, but for another outside.
Right, professional counselor.
Right, yeah.
Thanks.
Clarissa. How many children do you have in the independent living program?
I think right now we have about thirty-three. And that's split between myself and the co-coordinator. I'll see.
Any else? Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Yes. You're up. So last week presented the possibility of a build grant to recess far as email from Delta Development and the costs thereof. And right after that meeting, she forwarded a contract for you guys to review. And after we discussed where we would find the funding to pay Delta Development's fee, which would be through the maintenance fund from the retail tax and a grant for $5,000 from the County Partnership that we received last year. She forwarded the, I forwarded the contract to Larry Koclof, who reviewed it, and he made some really good comments. This is Delta standard contract, and it has a lot of things in there that favor them. So he suggested that there should be a specific timeline mentioned in the, in the contract. It notes that it's a ten-month project, but the application for the grant is due in the very end of May. So the rest of the ten months are for persuasion efforts down in DC. They talk to the congressman, they talk to the people on the panel that make the decisions. So the contract says it's $1,000 a month for ten months. And we wanted to clarify that we won't, we don't want to pay for meals and hotel expenses in DC because the implication was when we were invited to join this effort, that our fee would be $10,000, not $10,000 plus travel expenses. And since they're getting $1,000 a month beyond the application period, which in my view is the really heavy part of the work, that should cover their travel expenses adequately. Plus, they'll be receiving funding from Long Island County and Tioga County. So I'm going to request, at Larry's suggestion, that that expenses part be deducted from the company. And also, there's a confidentiality thing in there that says it runs out after a year. And we want any confidential information to remain confidential forever, or until we choose to release it rather than letting them release it. One thing is when a, when a grant is submitted to a federal or state agency, it automatically becomes public information as soon as it hits their desk. So in this case, it's not highly critical, but we don't need, you know, our competitors for the funding do know exactly what our grant says. And the other thing was about the termination of the agreement. It says that we can terminate at any time by sub in Delta. And Larry wants to make sure that they don't terminate after having been paid over for a while without giving us a work product. So we're going to request all of those things. Hopefully, the whole contract will be to your liking by Thursday, and if you'd go on Thursday's meeting. I have yet to submit it back to her. But she invited any corrections in my path, so.
And they did, Delta did ask that we submit our partnership into this tri-county regional effort by the end of this week, is that right?
Yes, yes. Because AECOM, which is the consultant that's going to be doing the cost-benefit analysis, needs to have all the project information by March 1st, so that they can begin their work on March 1st, which means I have to scramble or pull the project info together. And then she needs to know if we're going to do it or not by this week.
Is there any process needed to transfer the TPA grant to this project now?
Not that I know of. It was awarded to pay for the environmental blue that's at the trailhead in Castaneda. And that was installed at the very beginning of last year and has been in use. And it's the payment for, the revenue for it just hasn't been received yet. That grant closes out shortly, so we should be getting that $5,000 probably by the end of March. And I don't, I'm not aware of any issues with the other $5,000 from the $20,000 that they're allocating annually. Julie said once it becomes county general fund, it has to be trailed, related, but she has no specifics as to what you use it for. But it does have to be trailed, it has to be used for the trail.
So after this meeting, you will get these corrections that Larry would like to have to them, because like Mr. Hardy said, they need to know by the end of this week whether or not to participate. If they don't agree to those, then I have some concerns.
Yeah, I think they'll agree to them because they desperately want our participation.
Yes. Okay. On, what day was that, Jan? Thursday?
I believe.
Thursday. We had a conference call with, with the blondie people on the refinancing. The previous board commissioners had made a commitment that if the blond people could realize at least a 5% savings on, were they the 2015 bonds?
Twelve.
Twelve bonds? That they would be refinanced as long as it was at least a 5% savings. Came in at almost a 5 and three-quarter percent savings at this time. We had a conference call to, okay, the sale of the bonds, the bonds are going to market, and we're anticipating a closing sometime next week.
March 9th, March 9th.
March 9th, okay. Closing on those bonds.
Yes, the savings is $224,667.59. So it was good to make them wait in price of the bonds when things were more favorable for us. And the, at the same time, which was also sort of at the end of the year, it was recommended, because of the change in the makeup of our inmates at, at the correctional facility, going more towards federal inmates rather than those state inmates that we no longer are housing, it was recommended that we change the 2015 bond to a taxable bond. Because at the prison, if you're making money off of federal inmates, you can't maintain the tax exemption of the bonds. So at the same time that we were doing this other project, using their services at the same time, all of the people that are involved in bond refinancing and refunding, also getting one credit rating for the whole process, they were also able to set up the change in those bonds with no change in the amount, no change in the terms, no change in the amount of time we'll be paying, and get them to be considered a taxable bond, which will put us in compliance with IRS rules and so on. And the total net cost of all of that was $35.07. So it was sort of a no-brainer to go ahead and get that in compliance. We never know if IRS is going to check into whether we're really in compliance with those terms, and if it was kind of something behind us that was looming. So, so the whole thing was done, all of that was done on Thursday. And we'll be closing on both issues in the, in the future.
Excuse me? Confused, because we've had federal inmates since 2004.
Federal what?
We've had federal inmates since 2004.
Right, they made up a percentage of the population.
But not enough to not warrant interest-free bonds, is that what it was?
Yes. It was analyzed by the bond counselors, the folks that do the work on the bond refunding. And when the bond was taken out on the prison renovations, for example, that bond was taken out as a taxable bond. The older bond, they did some analysis of the percentages and felt at that time they didn't have to do it. Now this has changed things with the, the loss of state inmates. And so now we are making sure.
Beyond this percentage, so you're, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, maybe, I don't know what the percentages were before and what the cutoff was, but they were confident that, that we didn't have to do that previously. With the loss of these state inmates just this past October, they analyzed that percentage again and decided it was something that we should do. And it really hasn't changed the amount of the debt, hasn't changed the term of the debt, and was done, rolled in with this other process, so that some things could be combined and we didn't have to do one bond refunding and then another. It was all done kind of together.
Which saved us considerable amount of money.
It's not really the same, we're still spending more money than what we were. So it's a little deceitful to say, well, look at all this money we're saving, but really the last state of state inmates changed the formula funding.
Of course, the first, the first amount is savings.
The first amount, the total sum, is a savings.
Right, we're restructuring, we're restructuring bonds that initially were interest-free, so it's not as much of a savings.
Well, that's not our interest-free, that's the bondholder.
Bondholder.
The bondholder didn't, they weren't interest-free. They didn't have to pay tax on the money that, the funds that they make off of those bonds. So now we've reissued them as a taxable bond, and no net change to the county. The new owners of those bonds will have to pay tax on what they make on those bonds, the dividends on those bonds. Hasn't that interest-free, tax-free, that is not a term that applies to the county, it's the bondholders.
It's federal government. They're federal bonds.
They are general obligation bonds of the county. Someone holds our paper and makes money on the fact that they invested in these bonds issued by the county.
Right.
And will have to pay federal tax on the money they make from those bonds.
Anything else?
Not on that.
Okay. Assessment Appeals Training, Keith.
I think that he may have just summed it too. With the board appointing themselves, the Board of Assessment Appeals and Revision Taxes, for the first time ever, they have to take training under the Act 155 of 2018. There's three classes. The classes are assessment evaluations process in Pennsylvania, legal constitutional issues, and real estate tax exemptions. Each class is three hours, and at the end of each class you get five, five questions. It's being offered in various ways right now. One is to be on-site either in Harrisburg, or I think out in Indiana, Pennsylvania. There's also live webinars, which I think would be concurrent with these sessions. And then after May 1st, it can be through CCAP. What the association and everything is recommending, they're encouraging chief assessors to have all board members take webinar training to watch the training on, chief assessor, someone from the county assessment office. If your county is planning to have multiple board members take the webinar together at a common location, please register one online for the webinar. Each board member will have to be registered individually. After the webinar training modules have been completed, if either board member, CCAP will ask the chief assessor to verify that each board member has successfully completed the trainings. Verification form will be sent to each chief assessor. After the completed form has been received, certificates of completion will be sent to the assessment office. The training shall be and must be completed by the end of June. Another issue that I think the board should address is appointing or if they will have any aldermen, because if they appoint aldermen, if they use it as needed, they need to take the training also. And the cost of the training is $10 per person per launcher, so it'll be $30 per each individual taking the training. If it's here, then the county, if not, will be the cost of travel. It's still $10 where you take live, if you take it through the modules here through the county. I know approximately last, the last four years of the previous board, I am in, probably one day we had any aldermen. Last two years, we've not used them at any point.
Are those people still interested in being aldermen to the assessment board, do you know?
That I do not know. Usually what it's been over the years, it's pretty much each board member is appointed who they want for their alderman, and it's usually poverty affiliated. I don't know. I, you know, they, the board member alderman before is Kathy Eddley, it was Tom Jeffries and Tom Alley.
I guess we'll need to contact people to see if we have anybody interested in being, or we can contact those people who were and see if they're still interested in being an alderman. At least they've got some backgrounds and experience in it. You say by June 30th this has to be done?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We'll get with you, Keith, and try to set up a time when everybody's going to be available. I think it's going to be done three hours at a time for three different modules, is what?
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure if anybody was interested in traveling to Harrisburg, do whatever that way, but I think if it's like some of the stuff I've taken through CCAP before, I think you can, the only thing I'm not sure is how the five questions could be. If there's everybody's watching one laptop or one computer, which I'll find out, because if it'd be in here, if it had on a big screen, everybody can watch it sitting down.
I was going to say, too, down on the first floor meeting room possibly, you set them down there, we can have everybody come in for a three-hour session, get it done.
This is something that's been talked about for quite a few years, and it's finally, you know, put into effect.
Okay. All right, we'll get together with you and see when these things are scheduled, then we'll go from there.
But the earliest date it would be would be is in April 1st, in April 21st, April 8th, and April 15th is when they have them at the live locations. But I need to find out, too, they're talking about the webinar because they're broadcasting it. But after May 1st, it's at the board, whenever we decide through CCAP or convenience.
Okay.
And it'll be a two-month period until you have it done.
We will go from there. Thursday's, Jan, do you have anything else on these county items?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Things that we just spoke about?
Uh, no.
Thursday's agenda items, CYS contract for services.
Good morning.
Chris?
Um, we had our full-time agency solicitor resign, and her last day was on Friday. So she carried the bulk of the cases with the children and youth. And without her, that leaves a lot of cases to cover. So Justin Hauser, who we're contracted with, is taking the vast majority of those cases and assisting in the interim until we can hire another individual. And Tricia Jesper, or Hoover Jesper, has agreed to assist the agency with some of the cases that are conflicts that Justin can't take. So it's very kind of her and it's very helpful, so she's taking a handful of cases in the interim as well. The agency was contracted with Tricia to serve as a parent attorney in cases and guardian of lay-in in cases. So this is sort of, I guess, an adjustment to an existing contract, giving her a different rate, a higher rate for the cases that she's serving as representing the agency for an actual case. So that's a lot more intensive than being a parent attorney or guardian of lay-in. Some of the cases that she's taken, one in particular is probably the hardest case the agency has. So it's just, it's a lot more work. So that's why we're adjusting her contract to a higher rate for that specific work. It will be the same rate for parent attorney and guardian of lay-in as it always has been, just the higher rate for actually representing the county in those cases until we can go to decision.
Okay. So that will be on for a voting session on Thursday. Also, a transfer of 4D funds, possibly some personnel actions. I know we've got some job postings out there, and I'm not sure when they are due, but we've got some job postings out there. The meeting on Thursday will be our first quarter night meeting. It will be here at 6:30 PM on Thursday night, so there will be no 10 o'clock meeting on Thursday. And there will be no work session next Monday, it is President's Day. Do I have anything else? Those issues? Schedules?
This week, I think, yet today, you have an election board meeting at 10:00. At 1:00, Angela's going up to the Conservation District for a presentation on their programs and people. At 2:30, you have a meeting with the current DA Director. And at 4:00, you're going, oh, I have to find out where this is. You're meeting with Representative Borowitz and the Dunstown Fire Department.
I know, I know Representative Borowitz requested a meeting for here, so I don't know if it's going to be in this room or on third floor.
The calendar says third floor, Piper.
That's where I put it, but somehow I had in my head on a previous iteration, iteration that it looked like it was at the fire hole, but...
No, they moved it to here.
Okay.
I know it's going to, she requested that it be here, and I still have not seen anything as to what, what it's about, other than it says Representative Borowitz and Dunstown Fire Company. So that's, you know, you know now as much as I guess anybody here knows. I guess at 4:00 we'll find out.
Uh, you have a personnel meeting at 8:00 AM on Tuesday. At 9:00, follow-up meeting on broadband with Seadocks from Cedar Park. At noon, Suscalawea, Born of Dresdees Tuesday, tomorrow. At 2:00, there's a gentleman that's been trying to get a meeting with you, which we had some scheduling problems. I had it scheduled and then changed it. So he is from Premier Power Solutions, which I believe is something to do with solar projects, on county property that he would like to talk to you about. At 9:00 AM Wednesday, or wait, yeah, 9:00 AM Wednesday, Penn Strategies, another energy type of company that has been trying to get a meeting. And I made them wait until you were firmly ensconced in your position so you could speak with them. That's at 9:00. 10:30 is the prison board on Wednesday. And Wednesday night is Solid Waste Authority at 6:30. On Thursday morning, this was a just recent change, you're meeting with Judge Salisbury, the court administrator and IT about some IT things. At 9:30, there's a meeting with Keystone Security, Pedigree, about doors and cameras at the courthouse, or everywhere.
Everywhere.
Everywhere. Okay. Some kind of a tour group is coming to the Piper Building on, on Thursday that I agreed to give a tour, but I'm not quite sure who it is. I'll have to find that out, put it on each hour. At 3:30 on Thursday, Jeff, you started a meeting you want to have with our custodial staff once a month, that'll be the first one of those. And then the night meeting at 6:30, which you already mentioned. On Friday, Children, or Central County's Youth Center, that will be a Miles, Commissioner Kessinger, meeting.
That meeting is normally at 9:00. I've got notification it's going to start at 8:30. I was not involved in the preliminary interviews for the Jim Jones disposition. Jim is the director, he's going to be retiring. They've got it down, I think, to the final three, and they've requested that the full board come in at 8:30. They're going to schedule half-hour hearings. And then whenever the hearings are over, then the regular scheduled meeting of the Attention Center Board will take place, so that's on Friday morning. So I suspect I will be in Bellefontaine most of Friday morning.
Okay, at noon, there was going to be a revolving loan fund meeting, but that has been canceled.
been canceled. And at two-thirty, the EMA Director, Bill Franz, wanted to meet with you all and talk about some of the planning and grant programs for emergency services that he takes care of. That would be here at two-thirty. Two, Jan, did it change? Oh, I don't know. I have a line under two and I have a circle around two-thirty, so I'll check.
I have it at two.
Which one?
Two.
Two. Okay, we'll check that. Monday is a holiday, nobody will be asked. Katie, I forget something?
Aren't I doing the grants and overview for Miles and Angela at three o'clock on Friday? Or is that the following Friday?
It's, it's the fourteenth from three to four fifteen.
Okay, that might be why I moved Bill Franz to two.
Okay.
He didn't need a whole lot of time, he said. And then your grant overview. Oh, I do have that. Planning grant programs. I've had that, I was thinking that one with Bill Franz, but it goes with you.
Yeah.
Yes. What time do you have down for that, three?
Three, yeah. Because I'll be at Cedar Cog and I'll be coming back and I'll make it back by late in the quarter to three.
So that's two different things. President's Day is off all day. And then we start Tuesday, the eighteenth, the Housing Coalition at nine, the Housing Authority at ten. There are, there's a group of people coming from Cedar Cog on the eighteenth, and I set that up as a lunch meeting at Stella Hayes, I believe. Judge Miller is, and Children and Youth meeting that Jeff does every month is at three-thirty on Tuesday, the eighteenth. And then the Planning Commission, seven o'clock on the eighteenth. So that's everything for the next week that I have. And that lunch meeting is at eleven forty-five on Tuesday. And I believe you're one of that.
Yes, I am.
Anything on yours that I missed? Anybody?
I don't know, my head's spinning right now. Trying to figure this all out.
If I see you in your office and you're not supposed to be there, I'll.
Mr. Snyder, anything? That's it, thank you. Hardy, anything?
Just briefly, I wanted to remind everyone that this is the hundredth anniversary of women obtaining the right to vote. And there are several groups and organizations within our county that are planning some really exciting events and informational presentations. And one of those things is happening this Wednesday, the twelfth, at the Ross Library. And there'll, there'll be a speaker discussing not only the suffrage movement, but also the African-American role within that suffrage movement. That's at six-thirty PM at Ross Library on the twelfth.
Public comments?
I have a question. What's the progress with the Second Amendment Sanctuary City Ordinance?
We've not acted on it. There's been no further discussion on it. Anything else? Thank you very much. We'll see you Thursday morning at ten AM.
No.
Or six-thirty. My head's still spinning. Well, that's hard to get used to. Keith, I think I'd like to.